Okay, I'm gonna make some comments about the city council work session from Monday night. It was a long meeting, so I'm gonna try and move quickly through some of the things that stood out to me. The reason why this one is interesting is because there was a lengthy presentation given by the city's director of economic development Andrea Haynes regarding the status of economic development in the city. And it was, it was, there was a lot of lively back and forth, and I think we got some insight into the, the way the city council members think about our economic situation as well as the director's thoughts on it. So I'm gonna share my screen. I would say just sort of top line. We need more better metrics in order to place good bets. Ed Poteet, you'll hear him if you listen. I don't know that I capture any of the video where he says it, but he talks about the city needs to make bets, and he's right. We need to, we need to pick some things and, and, and go for them. But in order to make good bets, you need good measures. We need good baseline measures. We need to really understand how, how the features of the market in Mount Vernon are working. And I think that, I think there was some frustration in that we don't have a lot of good quantifiable baseline measures on dependent market variables. I mean, one thought I had regarding measurement, and I, I know it's gotta be hard is we have Youth Bureau. Why, why don't we, you know, put, put some kids out to work on collecting data on what's happening in the city? I mean, not only will we get great, great measures, but what a great learning experience for kids to get out into the city and measure what's going on. I'm, what I'm gonna do is I time signature things. We're gonna jump to the video. In some instances, but in the beginning, I'm just gonna talk about stuff and you can see, if you want to go to the video and you can see where it is in the Facebook video. Minute thirteen thirty-four, it's noted that there are eighty-eight minority and women-owned business enterprises in Mount Vernon. This is sort of a, taken from a group that entails New York City MWBS. And in case people aren't aware, there is a, there is a push to try and lift up MWBS. I think that that's, I think it's important and to correct for the historical disparity. There was the old boy network. And so the old boy network was just that. It was old white men who just gave business to other old white men. And since they, these men controlled the halls of government, minorities and women were locked out. And if you were a minority woman, it was even harder. It is even harder. So the idea of trying to, to sort of put forward a program that that seeks out helping small businesses that are run by minority and, and women business owners is a good thing to do with, of course, the important thing that people, it can't just be identity alone that drives it. It has to be merit-based. So and if people don't have the tools, then we have to help them get the tools so that they can do the work that needs to be done to grow in fields that they've been underrepresented. So that's why that was brought up. And it will keep coming up, because it is, it's a tricky problem to, to correct. But I think it's good that we're trying to do it. So next, minute twenty fifty. Ms. Haynes notes that non-property taxes through Q1 are up six percent year over year, twenty-two to twenty-three, and here were the numbers she, she cited. I'm not entirely sure what the difference between, is between non-property taxes and sales and use taxes. That's the numbers I track. I pulled these numbers. I put these numbers up here, the sales and use tax through Q2, twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-twenty-three from Controller Morton's quarterly reports. And then I pulled from New York State Controller data, just so we can see there's a little bit of variation. They're all up six, seven, nine percent. I don't know what accounts for the variation. This one in particular, so the Controller's quarterly report. He reports through Q2 through the first six months of twenty-twenty-two, twelve point six two million, sorry, that should have an M there, million in sales and use tax versus thirteen point five nine million through the first six months of twenty-twenty-three, an increase of seven percent. When you go and you pull the, the data from the New York State Controller, you got, you get slightly higher numbers, significantly higher numbers. The percent change is roughly the same, a little bit better from the state controller data, but the numbers are bigger, you know, a couple million dollars more. That's material. I don't know what accounts for that. Maybe at some point we'll get, we'll get an, an opportunity to find out from the controller why, why the disparity is there. Next, Ms. Haynes talked about statistics from the Mid-Hudson Regional Council Economic Development Plan. This is a bigger group that looks at the, obviously, the Mid-Hudson region. She just noted that there are increased, workforce increases in the leisure industry, hospitality industry, and construction. Those are workforce drivers in the Mid-Hudson region. She notes that the, the Mount Vernon Works, which is a program, there have been a few events over the last couple of years. They've accumulated a database of six hundred participant names, which I think is good. What we're gonna see, though, is, you know, when, when she's trying to do surveys to get numbers, the participation there is, is not so good. So here's one, for example, she notes a survey to see what people would like to see in Mount Vernon, and there were only forty respondents. So that's not a lot of depth, not a lot of penetration. I don't know why that is, but that might be something, you know, to work on, in that department. And here we're of the forty respondents from the Workforce Mount Vernon Works program. Here, here were the, the industries that they wanted to see more and to see, customer service, construction management, media art design, entertainment, and other. Ms. Haynes talked about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threat survey. You'll hear them talk about it as SWAT survey. This now, I know, we don't, we don't know how many participants, how many people responded to the survey. In fact, Caitlin Gleason asks about this at minute thirty-five fifty. We never get a response. I think this is something that we have to work on. As I noted upfront, we need measures. So it's hard to know if what we're gonna hear from this SWAT survey, how valid it is, because we don't know how many people responded. Anyway, the city strengths from this SWAT survey, I don't know how many people responded to it, but the city's strengths are noted to be entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial network, hub for diverse ethnic groups, foundational resources for live, work, play environments. This is, you don't really know what that means. It's hard, it's hard for me to understand really what that, what that means. There are no, there aren't good, I think, good definitions for these things. So, I mean, okay, I don't, I don't take much away from that. Opportunities, diversity, like participatory workforce, ARPA funds, strong support from state and regional, I guess, governments. This, I thought, was interesting, listed as an opportunity, lockstep leadership. I don't know. And I, I think that that's actually a threat. I don't, I don't see lockstep leadership as a, that's a little, that frightens me a little bit. Geographical location, you're right, this, these are, I guess, these are opportunities that we can capitalize on. And it's a great landing place for anyone who wants to start a business in Westchester County. Only two degrees of separation between many people who live here. This is the, the, this FFN, this friends and family network that I think it cuts both ways. I don't know how this is benefiting us. I mean, so you'll hear some of the a little later on, we'll, we'll hear from, from Caitlin Gleason about some of the problems and, and Ms. Haynes as well, some of the problems business owners have been experiencing. You would think if people are, are, are part of this two-degree of separation network, then they would be more sensitive to one another about their, their individual needs and the needs of the business. So I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't see how that's necessarily an opportunity. But anyway, that, that's the, that's what she listed as the strengths and opportunities. The weaknesses are listed as school district, performance, relationship with the city, lack of business diversity, taxes, deteriorating housing stock perception within the region, lack of a comprehensive plan. Threats to economic development are listed as an aging commercial and industrial properties, limited optics, I'm sorry, limited options for increasing the tax base. That's what this is really all about. And let's, I think this is where Ed Poteet's saying, we gotta, we gotta get some measures and make some bets. And we gotta do it quickly, because he points, he made promises during the campaign, and he doesn't want his term to end where we are right now. We're just sort of talking about, talking about economic development. He wants to actually see it, which is good. Increasing government service spending, these are threats. So yeah, money's, money's tight. City legal obligations, these are in the, we've seen these liabilities. I think probably they're referring to the lawsuits, the Kayla Tennis and the Mega Beverage. Those two account for, I calculated about thirty-five percent of our long-term liabilities. A minor city, the, the city is appealing both of those decisions, probably trying, you know, negotiate it down a bit. I don't know how they're gonna, how that's gonna work. Hopefully, it'll, it'll, it'll be a net positive that, that ongoing litigation. Okay, so now we're gonna jump into some of the feedback on the SWAT. Minute thirty-five fifty, I'm not gonna look at this, but here's where Gleason and Brown seem to be questioning the survey. You know, I think they were trying to get some more information on the details of who participated, how many people responded, things like that. I think I, I sense a general tone of skepticism about it from the council members, from the questions that they asked. I think they, I think that was right. I think, I think maybe Ms. Haynes probably took away from this, that we need to find a way to get some more quantifiable measures in the mix here. That, I mean, look, this is economics. It's metrics driven. We, you need market data, not, not just survey data, but actual numbers. So I think that that would, that would be helpful. I think that's what they're looking for in order, you know, as Ed said, to make a bet. Let's see, in minute forty, thirty, Ms. Haynes notes that she puts out a newsletter, but Council President Brown and, and Caitlin Gleason both state that they've never seen the newsletter. That, of course, is problematic. In fact, when she mentioned there's a newsletter, I thought, like, I would like, I would be interested to see that. I think there are other residents who would be interested to see that. Daniel Brown did say that, you know, there is, I don't know, people get the weekly, I think it's a weekly kind of newsletter from the city council on things going on in the city, going on with the city council. Daniel Brown said to Mrs. Haynes that she should get her the information, she can include that in that weekly newsletter that goes out from the city council. That'll be a great addition. It'd be good to have that. Let's jump and listen to some actual comments from city council members. First, we're gonna hear from, and you'll see the time signatures. I jump around because it was a long presentation and some of the comments from the city council members didn't come till the end. So that's why you'll see the, the timestamps won't be chronological. They might jump around a little bit. Let's jump to the actual video and listen to some of Danielle Brown, Brown's comments.
There's, the beeline comes here. There's so many means of transportation that people can get here to this community. I think the culture that resonates out of Mount Vernon, right? The history. We've had some great folks come out of Mount Vernon, grow up in Mount Vernon, participate in Mount Vernon, right? I think what I would love to see as a council member is we tap into some of these assets and start to share them, not just in Mount Vernon, right? Because we need to start to attract more businesses and more diverse businesses to the city. That's really what I'm hoping to see. And in economic development is the attraction of new businesses, identifying new creative avenues of revenue, right? Because we can't continue to tax our property owners, so we need to identify whether tourism is something that we can explore. Given the great history, right? We've had so many amazing people live here. We had Stuart Little, the, the author of Stuart Little, just so many people, Shabazz, right? And we're not tapping into this. We haven't created a network where even the people in Mount Vernon are aware of that. And I, I really feel like we're missing out on a source of revenue, because we're not exploiting what our true assets are. And I don't know if it is that we need to partner with a, a consultant, right, who can kind of help us identify and prioritize these new groups. But I don't think we're tapping into it. And because we're not tapping into it, communication isn't expressing it to the public. It's not addressed anywhere. We don't have one cohesive message for the city. We have DPW who has a Love Your City campaign. And that's all you see, right, throughout Mount Vernon. And I think we haven't been doing a fantastic job of tapping in. So if I had to say, it would be that we sat down with whatever group it is, maybe it's a inter-intra-departmental, always messes up, group, right? Or it's maybe it's your economic development group. And if you need us to do a resolution or ordinance creating the group, we're happy to do that, right?
I'm gonna stop it there. That gives you a flavor of what she's talking about. You know, I was a little, I don't know. City assets, the culture. It's not clear. I mean, I've lived here for about over twelve years now. I'm not entirely sure what she means. What is, is the cultural touchstone that would feed tourism? When you think of going on vacation, unless you're coming to visit family, that you're gonna be, that Mount Vernon is a destination for tourists. Would it be someday? Perhaps, but I, I don't know now. And I don't know that there is enough. I know in the past, I've thought about it in terms of this history, right? The, the, the number of people who, who have come from Mount Vernon. It seems, it seems like a lot, a lot of interesting people who have made names for themselves come from Mount Vernon. For a very long time, right? It's been that way. But I don't know if you could turn that into into tourism. I, I just don't know if there's enough there for that. She did mention you can't keep taxing the property owners. There was the mention of tourism. I, you know, I was a little concerned about at the end with the, you know, we're gonna do a group. Let's do a resolution to have another group. That just, you know, we, we can't keep just having people talking. I know people like to talk. That's not the same as development. Maybe, and you know, maybe you could argue it's a prerequisite. You could, you could also argue that it's not. I mean, a lot of things, people just do stuff. They get things done. Anyway, I'm sure this might have been a little bit concerning to Ms. Haynes that we might need to partner with a consultant. For me also, I'm thinking, oh, we have a, we have someone, a director, you know, does she have the chops to do it? I think she probably does. You know, I don't know if she needs to consult, you know, do we need a, a, a deep market analysis that she's not to, to sort of formulate our thinking before we make that bet on an industry or a couple of industries? Is Ms. Haynes capable of doing that? So let's jump now to Ed Poteet's comments.
Getting back to the SWAT analysis. This is useful, but what I'm wondering is, under the strengths, I don't see any strengths here that we can market. And as a city, we have to start, if we're really gonna bring in businesses, make bets, right? Like, if you go to, and just talking about bigger cities, in DC that they're known for government, right? It's the place where the federal government does its business. Boston's known for finance and, and, and insurance companies. Hartford is known for insurance companies. New York City is known for finance and real estate. And then, once you know what you're good at, you can go out and market to that industry. Looking at the strengths, I don't see what we can market to the general public.
Okay. So, yeah, that. So I don't see any strengths here that we can market. Once you know you're, what you're good at, you can go out and market to that industry. This is where he talked about making a bet. I don't see we can market to the general public. Later on, we're gonna hear that it seems like what Ed Poteet wants to do, he wants to make a bet on cannabis. Right? That's, you'll hear him talk about that. Clearly, he wants cannabis here in Mount Vernon. And that's gonna be in conflict with something that's going on now. You'll hear Caitlin Gleason talk about that a little bit as well. It seems to me, I mean, the first thing that came to mind is what is, what, what strength, what's the industry? It seems like low-income housing. That's, that's the industry that we're doing. Rather than using the Industrial Development Agency of Mount Vernon to give incentives, and you're here, someone, I don't remember who, talks about, why aren't we giving incentives to businesses, businesses? Well, the IDA would be a, a place to make a bet and, and, you know, go after building some industry. Instead, we're using it just to give real estate developers who seem to have connections to the administration tax incentives, right? That's what we're doing. Low-income housing, so or what, is what Mount Vernon known for? Low-income housing? Is that what we're known for? So we want to be known for low-income housing and cannabis? Is that really, is, will that be then frame the culture of the city that will draw tourism to Mount Vernon? Low-income housing subsidized by the residential taxpayers through tax breaks given to developers through the IDA and cannabis shops around the city. And so then what kind of tourists will we get with that? Well, you know, will, will it just be cannabis tourism? Is that what we'll be known for? Gleason's comments.
One thing that I, I, I find lacking is you know, how are you going about business retention here in the city? And what types of incentives are we giving businesses or what we're gonna create? Like, for the last two years, I've heard about Mount Vernon creating a bid situation here, and I haven't seen anything that has led me to believe that that bid is actually going to take place.
Okay, so I think we're gonna hear more. Let me just stop there. So business retention in the city. Incentives, right? I just mentioned that we're giving incentives to low-income housing developers. It's not clear to me how that will, how people who are economically challenged are going to be economic drivers in the city. And so those are where the incentives, tax incentives are going. Tax incentives are not going to business development. So, you know, look, here are a couple examples of, of ways you could do it. So there's a big push around solar. Well, what if we incentivize a, you know, a solar manufacturer, someone who manufactures panels or components of so, solar panels, or an installer who brings and has a warehouse here and installs them? Incentivize that. It's an old housing stock, right? Well, that means I just had a new roof put on. I had new windows put in. My windows were manufactured in Ohio. Well, why isn't there someone who's manufacturing windows in Mount Vernon? Or a component thereof, right? These are the kinds of light industry manufacturing that would serve our community well. Instead, it's low-income rental housing. That's where the incentives that the city is given. And I've analyzed this and shown how it leads to a loss in real property tax for the city. It's not made up. The, I understand why developers will try and make that claim. It's easy to make that claim when no one ever follows up. Except for the state controller, and, and those are the data that I have been relying on. And I've done quite a bit of research and have not found anybody who can substantiate that tax incentives to low-income housing developers turn into an economic plus for the city. She notes that she's heard about this bid system in the city for the last two years and hasn't seen anything take place. That, of course, is a problem. That heard means talk. So talk, 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 talk. No one actually making it take place. That's a problem, you know? I know everybody likes to talk. Everyone wants to be heard. But at some point, you gotta put down the mic and put pen to paper, design a plan in steps and execute that plan and measure the results. Let's go back and listen to this discussion on the situation on Fourth Avenue between Second and Third Street.
I try to. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, tell you something specifically. Okay, we've got a situation on, on Fourth Avenue, okay? Between Second and Third Street. Okay, have you been to any of the businesses there?
Almost all of them. I have been working with them intensely.
Okay, so do you know what's going on over there?
Which, which business?
It doesn't matter. Between Second and Third on Fourth Avenue.
I can think of a few different scenarios that are quite traumatic for the business owner, but I don't want to single anyone out. So that's why.
I'm not singling out a business. There, there's a situation between Second and Third where you have a group of people hanging out and that are blocking basically, basic business to take place. So as a part of the economic development, okay? They're not developing, right? Because they're not having the street traffic that they need to sell whatever products they have. Okay, so when you have the main thoroughfare, okay, the main thoroughfare that is producing sales tax for the city of Mount Vernon, okay? And people are not feeling safe there. How are we partnering with other departments within the city to make sure that our business district, our main business district is being taken care of?
Okay, so I know the business that you're referencing. I don't know if they're okay with me sharing that I'm aware and without them allowing me.
Like I said, just between Second and Third Street.
I know, I know.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it there. So Ms. Haynes is trying to be sensitive to privacy. And she's, you know, she's trying to navigate between you know, different departments. And what you get here is the messiness of different departments, you know, who has control. The question, of course, for me becomes then, well, where is the mayor? This, these are all people who are under the purview of the administration. They're not on the city council. Why, why isn't the mayor on top of this? You know? Here, here it seems like our economic development commissioner and Caitlin Gleason, a city council member, are aware that there's a problem that's chromatic, that was the word that, that Ms. Haynes used, for at least one business owner. It's impairing their ability to conduct business in a main business hub of the city. And people just seem to be kind of like, not sure how to fix it. Like, no, I, I don't understand. And then, and where, if the mayor's aware of it, that ought to be priority number one if you're interested in economic development of the city. It seems like this has been going on, hanging out and blocking businesses. That, of course, is not good. Let's jump up to minute forty-nine nineteen. Here, another issue that's impairing business.
About that scenario, because yes, I too am also, you know, not liking when I hear businesses that are having the same challenge over and over again. Another challenge was a different merchant, a merchant between First and Second who was blasting music every day. I personally got a call and walked over to that merchant and asked them, can the music be turned down? Because we're noticing that people are just, you know, loitering in the area because they want to be in the hotspot because there's lots of music. However, I'm not allowed, I don't have the bandwidth to do that every day. That's why I'm kind of pairing this with collaboration. The intangibles of setting a foundation for merchants, associations, and chambers.
Okay, so there, that's, that's a pretty serious problem. If you've got, if you've got people blasting music and that's impairing the ability for people to do business, that's a problem. And it's, collaboration is good, but someone needs to sort of, the problem has been identified. It sounds like if is there a noise ordinance that's being violated? Then go ahead and write a ticket to that, that business owner. Ratchet up the pressure, you know, we can't let this you can't let this stuff interfere with people's ability to, to, to sort of buy and trade, you know, make a living. It's, it's discouraging. And it's discouraging to people who would otherwise might be interested in, in going and patronizing those businesses. It doesn't paint an attractive picture. And then after, at the, this ends with, I pause it, but it ends with Caitlin Gleason saying, I don't really feel like you answered my question. Let's go and listen to Caitlin Gleason again. And then Ed Poteet, and then we'll, we'll wrap this up. She's gonna say that we need to make a change.
Association. I've worked with the Downtown Merchants Association. I've worked with the Chamber of Commerce. There's nothing that they can do. Right? There's nothing that they can do. What we have to do as, you know, legislators, elected officials, as, as department heads, is we have to make a change. And we have to talk to those other department heads. If somebody's coming to you as the economic development director, okay? Economically, it's not working for them to have people hanging out in front of their stores. And it's not just Second and Third. It's, it's from First to Third, right? They, they have, people have taken up, you know, space on, on the sidewalk that other people are afraid to walk by, or, or they're, they're smoking cannabis, or, or what have you. Like, that's why I feel like I'd like to know where we are in the bid situation.
Okay, so that's disturbing. Economically, this isn't working. People are hanging out in front of stores, taking up space on sidewalks so the people are afraid to walk by. Or they're smoking cannabis. Let's, speaking of cannabis, let's go see, we talked about, you know, Ed Poteet talked about making a bet. Let's see what he has to say about cannabis.
And lastly, cannabis. Something I didn't hear in your presentation was how do we, and, you know, this is going back to specific industries and making bets on specific industries. Cannabis is one of them. The state has clumsily rolled this out that there's still many, many more businesses that have licenses that, that haven't picked a spot yet. because of what the state's been doing or not been doing. So those businesses that have licenses that are looking for places to go in the market, the hope and prayer is that they consider coming into Mount Vernon.
All right, so Ed Potite says, lastly, about cannabis. He talked again about his making, you know, we have to make a bet on the industry. And the hope and prayer is that they consider coming into Mount Vernon. Let me stop sharing my screen there. That, that's a concern to me. I think it was around, it might have been around a year ago, maybe more, that Ed Potite had a, I believe it was a student of his home and this student was going to do a, I think, a market study as a, as a grad student project on cannabis in Mount Vernon. As far as I'm aware, we never got a report back from that student. I think what's concerning about this is you heard how, I mean, I, I don't have any problem with, with cannabis smoking. It's certainly better, I think, than, than alcohol, probably on balance, certainly not for, for young people. And that's the problem we have here. It's a, it's a small city and we have a lot of schools spread out, which means if you're going to have recreational cannabis, you're never going to be too far from a school. And the way that modern marijuana is packaged, it's often packaged in what appears to be candy, very high potency. The, the data now are starting to come in, medical data on the effects that cannabis has on the brain, the developing brain of adolescents. And it is not good. The point is, I don't know that just because cannabis could generate potentially some revenue, that that's the kind of revenue that we want. It, you know, and again, what kind of culture will the city be? It will be, it would be known as the town you go to to buy, to buy pot? You know, I, I just don't, I just don't know. It worries me. And also, you know, so that might also impact people who don't particularly want to walk down the street and, and smell marijuana. I mean, it's sort of like, imagine, you know, you have people who want to come and, and go to like a restaurant, or they want to go to just to an artist's gallery. But, you know, they might be turned off if they're, if they're walking down a street where there's music blaring and there are young adults who are getting high. That might not be in our best economic interest long term. There was another issue that came up at the meeting, which I, I might make another video about. And that had to do with tax amnesty, which was first brought up by Controller Morton last December, December of 2022, when he revealed that there were 1,200 properties in the city that owed a combined $25 million. And when he talked about ways that we might, you know, induce people to, to, to pay that money. One was to give amnesty on penalties and fees. And I'm fine with that, but Ed Potite introduced, he never actually, we never actually saw the legislation that was missing from, from the tally sheet. Hopefully, by the time this video goes out, the meeting will have been held and hopefully that was, that actual legislation was put in there. But it was just a letter about, about the proposal to codify taxed amnesty, not just for outstanding, the fees and penalties associated with, with past due taxes, but actually forgiving past due taxes. And that, I think we need a lot of, that's definitely something that as a community, we ought to have a good firm understanding of what we're talking about. My worry is that we won't. That, and then that leaves you open to arbitrary and capricious decisions. And this also is a very big potential moral hazard when you give, particularly if it's done without full transparency on why people, we're not requiring people to pay their taxes. That, that creates all sorts of potential problems. But we'll see what happens with that. Okay, let's end it there.